Good evening. We'll have a press release, and then we'll have a walk of silence from the Senate. And a walk of health, pumping for certain officers, even since twenty fifteen. And Ray Arnold, who was former president of Bloomberg, ruled cemetery and instrumental in establishing the town of Walk Hill volunteer endurance corps.
I think it's a little bit like, you know, the state of some of the, what we just said. One, anything, under the head, and it was all, we're living in the first of all.
Good evening. Tonight, we have three councilmen. It's been Johnson, they tell us they could be out. As we learn, I'm not sure that we have to be, we do have a call, so we will have our meeting. We'll start with, uh, Hannah, but with the announcements from the public hearing.
No, this is here by giving that there are four entries for the town of, well, so we're going to look at it. We'll go on, maybe look over five of twenty twenty-two, as amended by local law two of twenty twenty-three, to extend the moratorium and review and approval of application for the development of warehouses and distribution facilities in the town of Waukegan for an additional six months. Please take further notice and all the terms of the whole, like, the town of Walk Hill, which is in state, two thousand and twenty-three. At seven twenty-five P M, the Walkham Town Hall, like, in late time, to consider the adoption, we have forced a introduction of a home. Any resident of the town of Walkers and tenants be heard upon, safe and attractive local law, such public key. Coming your way on the movie here, Walkham Town Hall, like, in town drive. The town of Walkham, like, every effort to show appearing successful to first place authorities. Anyone requiring restoration assistance and reasonable accommodation can contact the town board. By order of the town board, the town of Walkham, please advise the town.
Thank you.
Evening. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening all. Uh, just noting for the record that the notice was published and posted in accordance with state and town law. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Well, now we have this public hearing on extending the moratorium. On that, on review of applications for development of warehouses and distribution facilities. Anyone from the audience of the nation? The audience, step right up, state your name.
This is Mike Broner.
Yes, that appear. I don't remember if the mic is on.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Steve. Uh, just hope that, um, that we actually do pass it along. Because I think the.
Just state your name.
Oh, sorry, Jim, Richard Connolly, the president over here, so I should. And, uh, I would just hope that you guys do pass the law, uh, just because, uh, I think the environment has changed pretty rapidly. Uh, just like to continue to pump the brakes a little bit, so we don't end up in all the county warehouses.
Thank you.
Christian, thank you. The one I'm doing.
This may, should, it should be noted that the, uh, Comprehensive Master Plan Committee is continuing its work, which is, uh, the reason why the board is considering the extension of the moratorium. They're certainly making progress, and, um, I believe that Councilman Johnson has advised that, uh, there are recommendations for changes in certain areas and, and this will, um, this will allow the work to continue of the committee while maintaining the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else in the audience regarding the local law, I'm trying to, um, to. And instead of make a motion to cross the public hearing. Thank you.
On data.
All right. Once we have, start the presentation. Um, in general. Maybe, though.
It's worth, well, it was.
We don't have to break, I don't need it.
Break stuff.
That's that. Anyway, hi, everybody. I'm Tom, I'm ready to tell a story along with a recent historic June, maybe June, we can stand up for a little bit. Uh, together with the Town of Walk Hill Historical Association, we developed plaques similar to this that recognize the people who have helped the town of Walk Hill grow and prosper. Tonight, we recognize Charles R. Wolf, born nineteen eleven and passed in nineteen seventy-three. I actually knew him a little bit, and I went to school with his son, who is with us tonight, who will receive this plaque in a few minutes. Charles R. Wolf served as supervisor of the Town of Walk Hill from nineteen sixty-five to nineteen sixty-eight. Originally appointed to fill the unexpired term of Jack Slush, he was later elected to a full two-year term. It was during his term in office that the original town hall was built at six hundred dot two eleven, and where the hotel is now. Prior to that, supervisor provided his own space.
He was a member of the, and past president of the Middletown Y M C, as well as director and trustee of the Middletown Y M C. Was president of the Middletown Chamber of Commerce by eighteen fifty-one, the fifty-two, and by eighteen sixty-sixty-one. In nineteen fifty-seven, he was president of the Walkham Hospital, so it was a member of the Boys' Health Council and of the accessory public matter. Wolf was named Man of the Year in nineteen fifty-five by the Middletown Community. He was a member and past president of the Greater Middletown City Council. Produced by the county, setting county regional chamber of promise and was elected as their sheriff. Charles R. Wolf founded C R Walk Heating Corporation in nineteen twenty-five. In the early nineteen fifties, to accommodate the continued growth of business, Charles Wolf purchased the buildings on four forty-nine, Fane Street, next to the volcanic town, now, William Carter Elementary School. A large wrecked building in the town of Walk Hill. It originally housed a general plan to produce the W E C electric tower for the Walk Hill Transit Trolley Hospital. Two other buildings on the property were the repair and storage ones of the trolleys.
George, if you would come down and help us with this presentation.
You mean, the mayor, you would, I'm told, please?
That's the apple, this way. And it's just, it's very great to see you. Thanks for being here, man. I don't know if you did anything, or just, um, present, what we just read, we read a lot. That's going, you know, I don't feel like, like, or said, you know, I don't even, yeah.
Maybe I just saw it.
Yes.
Uh, you can see why I got a low profile. My old man did it all. He, uh, he was in everything. He was in any, anything that had an organization or needed a, a, a president or needed somebody to, to, fund them, fund the place, or raise money, or do anything. He was the guy. And they, he always said, he said, you know, it was his, uh, you want something done, you find a busy man. There you go.
Uh, listen, I'm honored to be the supervisor, the founder, first times with man, of course, uh, it's, it's great, congrats.
And you and I appreciate it. Thank you.
I do have one more little thing to add to all this. You know, we do a lot of research in reviewing candidates to be on the platform. And we do have ghostwriters at B N N Science, Dave, Chris, and Sean, and they do a great job with the graphics. Many times, we rely on obituaries for detailed information, and sometimes we run into conflicting information. But today, we have not had the problem that this man had. An angry man hurried into the office of a town newspaper editor and explained, "That notice of my death in your paper is a lie, and I'll fight you in public if you don't correct it and apologize in your next issue." The next issue of the paper contained the following announcement. "We regret to announce that the paragraph in our last issue stating that Mr. Smith is dead is not true." Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Tom. Next, we got public participation on agenda items only. We got two classes. Do you want the audience? For the young. Okay, move on. And it's nine o'clock.
Yes, we have a, a standing note, it was a town board short document, and it's from Pastor Joe, and it was the I B S A Transformation Transformation Church, says to say you guys were requesting is an understatement from setting up the bounce houses and then staying and handing out the, where I'm counter treating, wouldn't have been the same without you.
That's it. Thank you. Uh, resolution?
Resolution of town board. Resolution of town board of the Town of Walkham, adopting local law number eight, two thousand and fourteen, sending local law number five, two thousand and twenty-two, which establishes, established a six-month moratorium prohibiting the review of all applications for the development of warehouses and distribution facilities within the town, resolved at the town board of the Town of Walkham, air by topsoil law eight of two thousand and twenty-three, entitled the local law, then the local law five of twenty twenty-two, as amended by local law two of twenty twenty-three. To extend more moratorium prohibiting the review and approval of applications for the development of warehouses and distribution facilities in the town of Walkham for an additional six months, a copy of which is attached here to and in part of this resolution. And further resolved, the town vote being as you might have to enter into the law into the limits of this meeting in the local law of the town of Waukegan, and give due notice to the ballot board, set local laws of the second base and the one. And a motion.
So, second.
Mr. Paul.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Yes. Hey.
By mistake.
Thank you. That's councilman, councilman calling. All right.
I'll start with highway. So the highway department was finished paving for the twenty twenty-three season. We finished on Wednesday, November eighth, with the help of Greenville and Menace Townships, helping us haul asphalt to Abranson Road. This road was paved with three inches of binder and will be topped next year. This eliminates one of the longest dirt roads left to be paved, so we're still working on the dirt roads. There's not many left. Um, I would say probably within the next couple, three years, you won't have any more dirt roads in the town. Um. This reduces wear and tear on our plows. Plow trucks increases efficiency and decreases the amount of time it takes to plow roads. To sum up our year, we have paved, all right, long less, stay with me. Sam Fast Boulevard, Crane Road, Walter Scott, Ramfashire Drive, Maples Road, Ballard Road, Cherry Street, Stratton Avenue, Fairlawn Avenue, Ben Lamont Drive, Godwin Road, Arnett Lane, Coringary Road, including the entire Circleville parking lot, Dudley Lane, McKim Road, Church Street, Elm Street, Shuangup Road, Certified Drive, The Lane, Part of Highland Links Road, and the following cul-de-sacs, Vista View, Sun Glow, and Alberta. We've had a very successful paving season, not too, not too many breakdowns, and our equipment is being cleaned, serviced, and prepped for next year. Um, leaf pickup. We've got two crews out there, working in opposite directions, hoping to meet somewhere in Scottstown. Once the first round is complete, we will start a second round, weather committee. Once it snows, it's kind of, you know, all bets are off. Um, and hopefully, we'll finish up in the first week of December. Veterans Affairs, there was Veterans Day this past weekend. Post eleven eighty-one had their ceremony at the Elks Club, which was great, and it is every year, great speakers. Uh, and then the very next day, the, uh, Korean-American, uh, committee held another, uh, joint ceremony with Post eleven eighty-one. And that was, uh, again, great speakers, uh, Dr. Lee was, was part of it, and, um, he's done so much for the community, and it was just a great day. Uh, also, the wall committee, we met on Veterans Day down at, uh, what is it, uh? Thank you. Texas Roadhouse, selling T-shirts, T-shirts and hats, and made some more money for, to go towards park. Um, as everybody knows, the wall is, is paid for. We're now working on, uh, a nine eleven ceremony. Uh, nine eleven monument, so that's what we're raising money for now, and, uh, details to come on that. As far as my comments, just want to say thank you to everybody who came out to vote. Um, it's much appreciated. Very happy to have been given the opportunity to come back for another two years, and I, I really, really, really appreciate it. And happy Thanksgiving, everybody. We'll see you afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor, I'll start with the parks committee. Um, they prepared to maintain several soccer fields for the Walkham Soccer Club's college showcase tournaments that were held November fourth, fifth, eleventh, and twelfth. And those tournaments are split between one weekend is dedicated to the boys teams, and the other weekend is dedicated to the girls teams. You know, um, I was, I was, the beginning, I held the first college showcase when I was president of the club, and the goal there is to bring in college coaches from all over the country, and they, and, and we become such a, a popular tournament that, that so many come to watch our, our local kids play, and hopefully, some of them, uh, good part of that, get offered college, um, scholarship. So it's their dream, and, and hopefully, we help, uh, to fulfill those dreams. Uh, they trench in new electric lines in the new bathroom at Stevens Avenue Park, that's going to be our people's ballpark, um, now. They've also trashed eighty foot of drainage going to basketball court, Circleville Park, eliminating ponding, um, issues of, like, excavated electrical lines, sanction station at Christmas Street at the Gallery of Park Lot. So, um, I'll talk about that way on as far as that. They continue to walk park, leave cleanup, and they continue building maintenance in the police department for their upcoming accreditation inspection on December fifth. They'll be assisting with the turkey trot run on the morning of Thanksgiving at the gallery, or more alone with the holiday parade on the evening of the twenty-fifth. Uh, as far as the police report, our current staffing is up to fifty-four full-time police officers. Arrests to date are down one point five percent, eight hundred and forty-eight arrests for two, twenty twenty-three versus eight hundred and sixty-one for the year of twenty twenty-two. The next police community council meeting will be held on Thursday, December seventh, at seven P M. Uh, police youth coalition, the next police youth coalition meeting will be held Tuesday, November twenty-first, at seven P M at the Town of Walkham Community Center, and then we'll be having a workshop on fire safety. Accreditation update, two weeks ago, state auditors performed a mini-assessment review of five percent of the department's policies and related documents. Passing this mini-assessment is a prerequisite for the full audit. I'm happy to report that the auditors found the department in full compliance. Consequently, a full state audit will take place on December fifth, December sixth and seventh. We look forward to providing updates on this process. Holiday traffic safety, the holiday season leads to an increase in traffic on our road rates. Consequently, there is an increase in vehicle collisions, many cases distracted driving, cell phones used, or over indulgence in alcohol contributes to the collisions. In response, the department will have increased patrols in the intent of addressing both distracted driving and driving under the influence of alcohol during the upcoming season. Unfortunately, we are continuing to see an increase in scams. Scammers are regularly preying on our citizens. It's important to remember that no legitimate entity or government agency is going to contact you with a request to log into your computer system. Additionally, a government agent will never contact you to request you to pay for a fine, gift cards, bitcoins, or cash. If these scammers contact you, simply discontinue the conversation. So in regards to that, just recently, I received, and, and I was talking to a few people, and they've seen the same email. I received an email from, uh, it looked like it was from UPS stating that, hey, we were not able to deliver your package, um, pointing that you click on here so we can clarify and, and your address, and just click on here. And so if, if you get that type of email, delete it. And as far as the broad, uh, across the board, know, if you get an email that states, take this action immediately or something bad will happen, like your credit's going to be, just continue with something, that's a red flag. See that as a red flag, and just ignore it. I mean, it's just the best thing that you can do. The other thing I tell people is, if you see a number come up, and you don't know the number, if it's static going, they'll leave a message. So, um, you know, a couple of things like that can help you save yourself a big headache and, and avoid, um, these frauds are, and scammers are going around, especially at this time of year. Um. First, I, I'd like to thank all my constituents for voting, coming out to vote, um, especially in the second ward, and it's my honor and privilege to continue serving both, um, the residents of Ward Two and the residents of the entire town of Walk Hill. Uh, there was touch on, on leaf pickup. Anyone that is wondering when their leaves are going to be picked up, the calendar, uh, is out on our website. You can click on that. Just keep in mind, it's all subject to weather. So, uh, if it snows, rains, whatever, it, it could be delayed. Um. One thing is important, and I see this a lot. Folks, if you put your leaves out to be picked up, they should go on the edge of your property, not on the edge of the road where you cause an accident, people avoiding these piles, or they don't see the pile, they run right into it. So please, consider that when you're doing this, uh, on the edge of your property. And the last thought on that, as, as, um, Mr. Ross here has said, it's just leaves. We'll get to them, and eventually, they'll be gone. Outside of that, I want to wish everyone a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your friends, your family. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, I've got a brief couple of things to say. Um, we need next Saturday, uh, twenty-fifth, we have our holiday parade and tree lighting. I believe that on Monday, we're going to cut down a tree and transport it over to the Galleria, uh, Mason's parking lot. So look at that, we, uh, probably gonna, um, have, uh, a Facebook line or pictures on social media as we cut the tree down and, um, take it, deliver it to the Galleria. And this all goes with the partnership that we have established with Thorwood Acres Stanley Farm. They are going to donate the tree again. I believe this year is about the same size, thirty-five foot tree. They're gonna cut it down, bring it decorated for the town. And, um, on the twenty-fifth, when we have our parade, we're just gonna start by Orange County Trust, the bank, and, um, get there. We're gonna light up the tree. Should be, whether, you know, weather holds up, we should be, have a nice night to light up a tree, and nicer than tree. Um, and right after that, we have our menorah lighting, which is on, um, December eleventh at six thirty, and right here in front of Town Hall, and then Town Drive. And on December twenty-sixth, we have a Kwanzaa celebration scheduled seven P M at the community center. Um, real quick, uh, last month, we did have a very successful trunk of tree here in the town hall. Weather was great. We had a lot, a lot of kids and parents come in, and, you know, it was just a great event, thanks to E P W, uh, the police department, uh, my O E M office, uh, led by Chief Hartman and Laura Gracia and Corinna, the John Drake, they put it all together, and, uh, it, it was really good to see everyone out having a good time, and, you know, we had, you know, some of the people that I know, uh, Matt Clark was out there, and she dressed up her trunk, and of course, everyone knows, um, I was dressed up, and I was dressed up, Mario Luigi, so it was a fun time. We really had a good time, so thanks to everyone that participated in that. Um, so everyone knows that next week, we have a work session, session, see, I do from November twenty-second. Uh, we are going to cancel that. Work. Uh we are going to cancel that. Work work session on November twenty second is canceled. We'll be back with a work session on November twenty ninth. First, for pickleball courts, um I think in the rise up there, on a daily basis, people are playing, people are playing pickleball. And I'm still waiting on one of the councilmen, you know, to go up there and play with me. Well, I got my racket. When we're gonna play?
I heard I had surgery. He asked me to play after the surgery. Before he was, before the surgery, he wasn't mentioned. He's not even, he's got a good experience.
Okay.
Let's do it.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna play. Um. I wanna thank everyone who came out, um supervisors, um race is still undecided. Uh thank everyone who come out and support uh myself and what I voted. I appreciate that. Um one thing I wanna just say, it's the holidays. Speak to your friends, speak to your family. It's the holidays. People who have loved ones, you know, sometimes. Get a little down and out, so please reach out to them, speak to them. People get, you know. Sad during this time, they even know it's supposed to be a festing. So please speak to your family, speak to your friends and um. Make sure, congratulations to Mr. Wolf, uh like I said before. Um it's great to be able to follow um great men who have held this position and um. And that's, that's great. You know, town always had great leadership and I hope that I can um just. Put a toe to that, those shoes and um try to make them proud, they look nice. Um. And last thing, happy Thanksgiving to all. Enjoy, enjoy your families. Next week is Thanksgiving. Enjoy, enjoy the day and give thanks to whatever you have that maybe to get thanks for. Uh as you know, one last to that. Thank you, uh Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Um Senator Miami, um plea for, we have received uh thirty ornaments from the Boys and Girls Club Giving Tree. Um we've done this now probably around twelve, thirteen years. Um we we agreed to try to provide for thirty children. Um so far with my my steady people like Mrs. Cohen and and some of the people in my office. Um we halfway there. We propose to English us. We've only had the ornaments since Monday, so if you're interested, stop in the office. Um it's just a fun thing to do. They give you a name for child, they give you a few ideas of what they like. Um they give you the size that they wear. Um it really is just, it's something nice to do because a lot of those kids, this is what they'll have for their holiday. Um. Thank you to our election inspectors. It's it's a very long day, um difficult to find. Um people who wanna work that fifteen hour day, but we, I just wanna say thank you to all of them that work for the town of Walkham. Um we have a lot of uh election districts, so we do need a lot of help. Um and we're grateful that that all of that worked out. We still have some Tara certificates left for this year. Those are the felines, stay in there certificates. Um we have them in our office, they're twenty five dollars. Um Tara, which is right down the road, um a good neighbor to us, they also hold a low cost vaccination credit every third day. Where you can go and take your dog or cat and get um the different vaccinations. It's very reasonable. I think all of the shots together and the cost is twenty five dollars. Um they're also very hardworking people down there. Um again, our golf course is cooking for Thanksgiving. Um last year, our family was kind of under the weather and a lot going on, so we said, you know what, let's call Cory and let's let Cory cook for us. And Cory cooked for us and um not that I'm not gonna do anything this year, I'm gonna do some stuff, but Cory is cooking for us again. And if you're interested, um you pick it up on Thanksgiving Day between ten and two, and I believe when you pick it up, it's warm. Um so reasonable price, you call the golf course, three six one one zero two two, extension five, um ask for Cory. And um Saturday, the middies are playing, I don't know what kind of championship it is. Um it's at the high school field. I think it's eight dollars for admission. Um I'm sure Mr. Gracia will be there with his own baby hat on. I hope he didn't have a major as yet. But um so during that area, realize that there's gonna be a lot of traffic around.
Um Louise, I wanted to say that because he's not gonna mess up that hair. There's no way he's gonna have a hat on.
Absolutely. And hopefully they win and they they uh work their way up to the dome in Syracuse. So happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gracia, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, Town Board. Uh just real quick tonight, the councilmen have touched on a lot of things. We did have an extremely uh busy uh summer uh reconstruction, maintenance on town roads. Um overall, uh Councilman Coin read the list. We actually ended up paving twenty four town roads. Uh we put down over seventeen thousand tons of blacktop and all with the exception of Ballard Road, that was done by our own town forces. Um we have all the equipment to do it. We have the manpower to do it. Um they love doing it. Um all in, we spent uh one point, one million, one hundred ninety two thousand, seven hundred fifty nine dollars on blacktop this year. Eight hundred fifty thousand, that came from CHIPS money, uh and the remainder came out of uh of the town copper, so thanks to the board for supporting that. Um if we were to contract that work out like neighboring municipalities do around us in the county now, we would probably get at best fifty percent of that work done. Uh with prevalley rate and things like that, so we're very proud of our town forces um and being able to do that. Um on that note, going into twenty twenty four, I want to thank the supervisor of the town board for their support of our twenty twenty four budget requests. Um we're gonna be uh, we're gonna be out there next year uh just as aggressive. Uh we've got some good projects coming. We've got a C D B G project over in Northern Woods, stuff creates some drainage, we're gonna pave over there, so we got a lot of good things happening. Um all of our town Walkhill parks are still open for the season. Our crews have been out there clearing them out, getting rid of dead trees, leaves, things like that. But if we get a nice weekend or a nice day tomorrow, it's supposed to be beautiful, uh get outside and enjoy one of our parks. Uh Town Walkover Golf Course, of course, is still open for the season and they'll remain open daily pretty much all the way through to winter. Um they don't close unless they absolutely have to. Um the holiday parade, the supervisor spoke about that. Um we're gonna be working on that. Um we are getting our tree on um Monday. I said, what's interesting, uh New York City went all the way to Bestow to get their tree.
Now, you're.
Yes.
Yes. All right, we're back. Um just to wrap up, I wanna thank everyone uh who assisted last weekend. We had the New York State Public High School Athletic Certification Soccer Championships at the Middletown High School. Um this weekend, as the clerk mentioned, uh Middletown is playing Christian Brothers Academy at noon. Um that's for the regional semifinals. That's at Middletown High School, which is awesome. Uh first regional playoff game for the middies at home in over thirty years. And then next weekend, Thanksgiving weekend, will be the East Regional Football Playoffs um at the Middletown High School. So and we have to remember, when they're at the Middletown High School, uh all the hotels, all the restaurants, all the good stuff is in Walk Hill. Um and they're all full and a lot of good stuff happens, so I wanna thank them for coming down. Um lastly, just real quick, um Mr. Wolf and Mrs. Wolf, it's great to see you here tonight. And Mr. Wolf, um you know, um you know, he mentioned a fact about his dad and what he did, but Mr. and Mrs. Wolf, I know I have personal experience with the fact. That they have just been just as generous to their community. They've done a lot of amazing things in the community. And maybe it wasn't as uh, we won't say as flashy as your dad, but people know what you do and what you have done for this community. And uh your legacy is something to be proud of too. So again, thank you very much for everything that you've done. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we have public participation. And. Step right up. What code? Mr. Cody.
Last weekend, last, I'll get it to the senator in a minute. Last week, somebody stood up here and said that the flags were ripped and torn. And the committee who takes care of the flags doesn't take care of the flags. Well, I'm gonna tell you something. That gentleman over there and I changed the flags in the park. This flag was taken down and you can see that it is not ripped, is not torn. It's not really dirty, but every six months, we change all the flags in the park. We also go around the town and if we see a flag, we give them a flag. And so we can tell you that right after that. We get the health supply. We give the Morgan Legion a flag. We go around town at our expense. And give the flags away. And then we take the flag to the cemetery and we burn them. So that takes care of the flag. Maddie's Diner has a flag, but that's on private property. That's not the town, it's private property. Okay, the other thing is, is for the last five years, the Veterans Committee. Have been buying sandwiches and the coffee at Maddie's Diner. And then in the last two years, we also did it at Tooties Diner on in New Hampton. Free to all veterans, not just Walk Hill, but free to all veterans. Next week, the tree in the in the Veterans Memorial Park will have lights put on it. From the committee for the lights, the lights will be installed on the tree. Also, at the tunnel, we'll be putting two big wreaths at the tunnel from the committee. So I just wanna let you know a couple of things we're doing. Tonight, I have two, I'm gonna give them to you. I had two left of the uh Texas Roadhouse. Where we were selling t-shirts and hats. We raised some money and we bought. Something, the lights and stuff for the park. So I just wanna let you know that we're very busy in town. So I I I I um just wanna let you know is that sometimes. We go to private property and the people say, no, we don't want it. It's not our fault. But this was happens in the town of Walk Hill.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Thank you for everything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Everyone on Zoom? The audience?
I just wanted to know if you had a goal for that um. Nine eleven memorial?
Yeah.
So we don't have a price yet, uh but I can tell you what the ambition is. And that is a. Twin Towers, two buildings, marble, like a white marble, gray marble. Um eleven foot high by three foot, you know, uh squares and um. You know, I mean, when we, when we first got started with this, the the taller sections, the midsections of the of the Vietnam Wall. They were like eighteen thousand and change. Um. So I know that that was a number of years ago. I'm sure that number is now probably, if I had to buy that today, it would probably be, I don't know, twenty three, twenty four thousand each. So now that those are eight foot, we're going up a few more feet, so I don't. It's probably gonna be somewhere around forty, forty thousand. What do you guys think? There's a few members of the committee here. Right? Louise, we talked about that and, you know, so pro- probably somewhere around forty thousand dollars, but it's still in the in the design phase as well. Because we're trying to.
Is all people from the town of Walk Hill or?
Yes, yeah. Um Luisa is on the committee. Mike is is president on the vice president. Um Luisa uh does our secretary. I'm getting there, yep. And then uh Rachel Carr and then Larry and Rosie uh Walsh. And then we've had a number of people come through that have helped us on various projects, uh fundraisers. But that's the core, that's the group, that's us. So.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Yep, absolutely.
Just for a second, I uh I was actually, I missed the last meeting, um and I don't know if it was stated, if it was, I apologize for repeating. Um but if back in October, um Mike Cody actually went on the Hudson Valley Honor Play with us. Um Mike had an amazing day. We were able to hook Mike up with a gentleman by the name of Jerry Ritzinger. Who's a past chief out of Silver Lake Fire Department, volunteer, past uh uh fireman out of New York City F D M Y. And Mike and Jerry have known each other for pretty much a lifetime. Um so Jerry went with one of his best friends, Joey LaBelle, and Mike had his daughter accompany him as his guardian. Um and the Hudson Valley Honor Play, I know um, I know Jim has been on it, of course. Um so what we do is we take veterans to Washington, D C. It's a one day trip. Uh it's a long day. We start at five in the morning. Um all expenses paid for the veteran. And we go to the World War Two Memorial, we go to Iwo Jima, we go to Lincoln Memorial, the Korean Memorial, the Vietnam Memorial. Um changing the guard at Arlington, and then we end up with a beautiful banquet dinner um right outside the airport in Virginia. And then we fly back at eight o'clock at night. Um what happens throughout the course of the day, uh the veterans that go on the flight. Uh last flight, we had eighty three veterans. We had one World War Two veteran. Uh he was World War Two Korea. He was ninety seven years old, a dairy farmer out of Olster County. And we also had three female veterans, which is the most female veterans we've had in quite a while. Um but at the end of the day, um the the real thing, what's really impressive now, we've been flying for ten years. We've flown over three thousand veterans, um and we're now um pretty much the majority is um. Late Korea era, Vietnam era, and to get the folks on that plane, um specifically the Vietnam veterans and the Vietnam era veterans. Uh and they hear something all day long that they never heard um when they came home back in the seventies, and that was thank you and welcome home. Uh and it was absolutely amazing day. I had the honor, like I said, literally, I serve as a bus leader. I'm on the board of directors for Hudson Valley Honor Play. But I had the honor of accompanying Mike and Jerry. They were on my bus. I called Mike up at the airport to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Um I worked with Mike here for the town for well over thirty years. And uh like I said, for him to come up here tonight, and I I apologize that I was at, missed the last meeting. But uh nobody should be picking on anything about Mike Cody does. The man's got a harder goal than, that's for sure, exactly. Michael, in all our blessings, thank you very much for everything that you've done for us and that you continue to do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said.
Yeah, let's tell you something. It was a great, great day, had lots of food. And it was beautiful, really, well organized. It was beautiful, really, well organized, very, very put together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. So I had the opportunity to see Mike that morning. He was very happy that morning. Um, but, um, thank you to all our vets. Um, everyone know how I feel about the vets. And, um, it's a great honor to be here and, you know, sit with the vets and, you know, give them what they duly deserve. Take care of our vets and Lou, thank you for what you do with the honor flights. Uh, one day I would like to meet, um, be on that flight with my father-in-law. Um, we'll see. But that being said, I make a motion to adjourn. To adjourn. Start. All in favor? Right. Thank you for coming. Good night.